Place to hide where you are less likely to be found and lock any doors that you can. And fight, and fight, and as a last resort and only if your life is in imminent danger. Our staff will provide additional direction and assistance on what to do. Thank you for your team.
I follow my daughter to give thanks to you for your loving kindness and your tender mercy. Thank you for keeping peace among us. We ask that you place our mind in our hearts with my thinking on the thing that will make our county a better place in which you live and have those things that we share together. We make our county a better place where people can have a life they want to live. Bless the communities in your care.
Yes, sir. First item that you have on your agenda tonight is consideration of approval of FY24 budget. I have in your packet a memo outlining changes that have been made since it was presented at your public hearing. It's okay, I'd like to just walk through that. Since your last meeting, staff and I have reviewed and revised the proposed FY24 budget. The most significant revision is the inclusion of the cost of the Phase 1 implementation of the new compensation plan. The others are related to errors found and corrections made. Also, I've included a few other notes for clarification of the budget as presented. Overall changes. Based on the additions and changes described below, the county's proposed budget for FY24 now totals $74,079. It was $72,117.89 when presented on June 5th. Now, the proposed budget is a decrease of $66,566 or 1% from the original budget of the current year. The proposed budget includes a fund balance appropriation of $77,863,238. That number was $6,376.73 when presented on June 5th.
This is an increase of $2,293,881 from the current year's original fund balance appropriation.
If we were to spend the entire fund balance appropriated in FY24, what I want to inject here for the, in particular for those in the audience, that has never happened since, at least since I've been here probably longer. It will be, but if that is the case, it could be spent because you will be budgeting it. It will reduce our unassigned fund balance to approximately, and that number is actually 14.4%. I will direct your attention at your place. There's a copy, and this is just a review of our fund balance appropriation going back to FY20. You can see what the actual numbers were from FY20 to FY22. Then we are forecasting fund balance, unassigned fund balance for current fiscal year, and of course projecting what it might be for next fiscal year.
Details, detailed notes regarding budget changes are as follows. Revenues. $400,000 in revenue for motor vehicle interest was duplicated. That has been corrected. The advertisement costs received for tax collection was left out. $45,000 has been added. The annual tax was left out. $10,000 has been added for that. Based on further consideration, Medicaid cost settlement revenue was revised from $300,000 to $250,000. Those are the changes in revenue side since your meeting on June 5th. Now for expenditure side, first personnel. Since your meeting on June 21st, Mercer has revised their recommendation. After a review, Mr. Bob Formally with Mercer, who presented at the meeting, stated that their benchmark assessment may not fully reflect the current competitive market dynamics for the sheriff's office and EMS for the county. He noted that recent pay actions announced among surrounding municipalities and potential additional actions indicate that the affiliated EMS and sheriff's office may continue to see upward pressure on wages. And that's a direct quote from his email. Attached are slides showing their revised recommendation. This change, this changes the cost for Phase 1 implementation of the compensation plan from $1.6 million to $1.7 million. It was already included, but not pointed out that I have added $10,000 to employee events to support employee morale boosting activities throughout the year, as well as an all-employee appreciation event as recommended by our employee voice committee. I have revisited the vacancy allowance proposed budget. Refer to the handout that's included. There's a handout that describes that data. I show the current vacancy for each of the departments listed. I anticipate that the vacancy rate will decline due to the Phase 1 implementation of the compensation plan, and therefore the budget vacancy allowance accordingly. The total vacancy allowance budgeted, which includes salaries and insurance, is $3,145,769. This is $204,231 less than what was previously presented to you. Other expenditure changes and notes. $20,000 was budgeted to rent space for the DMV driver's license office. This has been removed since we now plan to purchase a building for use. The $232,000 for capital outlay in emergency services was added in error and has since been removed. This is a request to purchase a new tractor and mower primarily used to maintain the transport and speed lines. I will reconsider that request later in the fiscal year. Also, the $225,000 in capital outlay for EMS requested to purchase a new ambulance was added in error as well and has since been removed. As I noted in the capital outlay spreadsheet that I shared at your budget work session, I'm holding the potential purchase of a new ambulance until we receive our expected Medicaid cost settlement funds. You have asked that we revisit the possible lease of cars for the sheriff's office. We have met with a representative from the company who is preparing a proposal for us to review. In the meantime, $125,000 remains in the budget for the purchase of cars in the sheriff's office. I suggest that you approve the inclusion of that in the budget with the understanding that we will hold those funds until a decision is made on whether to lease those vehicles. We should have that information probably within a week or so. I suggest that once we receive that, that perhaps the budget committee to need to review that. Next is solid waste. It was included but not noted to you previously that the recently created solid waste supervisor position was cut from the FY24 budget. This position has not been filled. Therefore, we saw this as an opportunity to minimize the amount of transfer needed from the general fund. Changes regarding outside agencies. The summer recreation program, which has been funded at $28,800 for a long time. You'll recall this is something that the county has invested in probably for over 20 years alone, has been changed. This is a program we funded for over 20 years, and we've been paying for those staff members directly to run the program. However, they are mostly Edgewood County Public School staff, and we felt it better that we provide the funding to ECPS, and they employ and pay those who run the program to which they have agreed. To accommodate school paying for retirement, which are our employees, so we did not take out the retirement with the FICA, we increased the funding to $34,000 from 2018. As discussed, we are budgeting and transferring $1,024,400 from sales tax receipts reserved for school capital funding to a school capital fund to hold until we have planning discussions with school officials. Funding is included for United Community Ministries, the Strategic Twin Counties Education Partnership or STEP, and the Mercer Foundation at $25,000 each. I recommend that you approve this along with the budget and authorize me to execute performance agreements with each of them. I recommend that the board excuses those members from voting where those members have a conflict. Also recommend that you take separate action to approve Phase 1 implementation of the proposed compensation plan as presented. I respectfully submit a final proposed budget for the 2324 fiscal year. And Mr. Chairman, if you all have discussion, if there is a motion, I'll be happy to help direct the process of those members being excused from voting from those agencies.
I remember the four parts that they mentioned. As far as, I'm trying to find out the 4% that was represented for, I think, everybody. In addition, there was the 6%, I think, that this budget go for the next year or?
That's in this budget. So what is included? There's $1.7 million included in this budget. And that is to accommodate the implementation of what we're referring to as Phase 1 of the implementation of our new compensation plan. You'll recall that part of the plan is taking us from essentially having two pay scales, one for sheriff's office and one for everybody else, is having four structures, four pay structures. And they are for sheriff slash detention, those sworn officers, sworn personnel. Then there is healthcare, those that are purely healthcare positions, clinical type positions. Then you have EMS, there's medical services. And then the fourth and largest is what they refer to as county offices. And that's by far the majority of our, that's around, that's what it says, 256 employees. Mercer's recommendation was for everyone to get a 4% increase. But then based on the proximity, the distance from the market as it was studied, they're recommending differences for each of those four categories. So, and this has been revised since they made a presentation to you last week. So now the total increase recommended for Phase 1 for the sheriff and detention staff is now 5% instead of 4. And that was that note that I read just a moment ago from Mr. Formally from Mercer. For healthcare, for those in the clinical positions, it's a total of 8%. For those in emergencies? EMS emergency medical services is a total of 5%. And then for those remaining staff and county offices would be a total of 10%. And then? Those increases is what we're estimating to cost. That includes the cost of FICA and the charge, I mean FICA and 401K and those kinds of things to be in 1.7 million dollars.
Do you have on here that we approved the compensation plan next? But when we vote for the budget for approving the compensation?
You're approving 1.7 million dollars in the budget and then a reserve for salaries.
So do we discuss the compensation plan now or do we discuss the compensation plan later?
That's, that's what I'm asking. If we approve the budget and don't approve the compensation plan, does that approve the funding? Well, if you approve the budget, it's 1.7 million, there'll be 1.7 million that we won't support.
Right. That's right.
If you prefer to reverse?
I'm really excited about that. That's, that's totally.
Okay, congratulations. Action to approve the budget or if there's a motion? I have a question. Do we have any further?
So, in the compensation plan, if we're gonna, it sounds like that's what we're, we're just gonna approve that 1.7 million now?
So, my one question there is a 10% bump for the highest earners in the county, which is that 200 employees that we've said is a big, is a big bump. And a lot of those employees that we as board have done independently to discuss their salaries.
Independent of the Mercer plan?
So they've already got the increases this year above COLA?
There are, including that would be? Four employees that this?
Above grade 31.
There'll be four employees that this board controls increases for. That'd be mine, Mr. Peters, sheriff, and the register.
But we just hired a CFO?
And we increase that grade twice while we were hiring?
Yeah.
So, so that's effectively a raise by increasing that grade?
So now we're mutually giving the 10% raise on top of the?
Grade that we just increased.
Well, and I understand that you're making, but just remember that what was done by Mercer was to look at where we are compared to the market. And it shows that regardless of where those, those four, whoever, even all of our department has said, it still shows that on average, we're that far away from the market.
I understand. My point that I'm making is there's four grades that have no county employees in those grades. In between, between 6th and grade 31, there are no county employees. So what that tells me is that there's no one in that, we pretty much control and visit those top tier salaries. So I'm not saying that we shouldn't give them the 4%, but I think that we should look at those, those employees independent of grade 26 and below.
So with the board, my recommendation would be to give those an increase?
My amendment to that, I'm sorry, would be to say at grade 26 and below, at current grade 26 and below, to give the 10%.
Above grade 26 would be to give the 4% currently, and then to look at how we should adjust it from there on a case-by-case basis. Those are highs, that's the biggest hit to our budget. And a 10% raise, 6% on top of that. We've just given attorney raises, COLA, just given, the county manager raises, COLA. So we're really looking at the, it is, it not, we should? My point that I'm making is that?
Those are happy above COLA. And so we're effectively giving them two raises in the same, three month period. Because that's, at this, at the current base, I mean, that's, we include FICA. It's almost $17,000, $20,000 per employee at those highest rate.
Why, why have Marcus there? And say to the employees and so on? All of these, I mean several apples. So I, I, my recommendation would be?
The whole purpose for all of this was to try to get, we're not there, but to get us at least in a place where we are protected. So now that we have professionals who then we paid a whole lot of money to telling us that if we do this, this one is up, and up is up there, then why would we not? That's the whole intention to begin with. I would think.
They're just a clear delineation of people at that grade. And then we're changing those grades, but when you look at, there's a clear delineation of the top versus the bottom. And in the market study, we have 200 people. You don't know, the top is only five employees. So we don't know what their compensation is compared to the 195 employees at the bottom. So the bottom might be the ones that are skewed or truly changing that demographic.
I'll make that motion.
Hold on, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. Are you voting on the budget?
For the compensation, the budget for, then we need to have members excuse over. Yes, so, Mr. Webb is not here tonight. Mr. Thorn is on Caroline Gateway Partnership Board. Commissioner Harris is on Boys and Girls Club Board. And Reverend Hines, who is on the Razzwell Memorial Laboratory Board. And outside of Mr. Webb, is there anyone else that has any that I missed?
There should be one thing of, of?
Outside agencies that we're, that we're, that we're?
So we need a first?
A motion to excuse those three from voting. It will be for Mr. Thorn from voting on Caroline Gateway Partnership budget. Commissioner Harris on Boys and Girls Club budget, and Reverend Hines from the Razzwell Laboratory. You got a motion? Yes, sir. So first, we need a motion to approve funding to upper coast plan council of government an amount of $21,990.
I'm sorry, I don't know, things were given out.
Commissioner Webb is not here tonight. So first, we need a vote on funding for Caroline's Gateway Partnership for $290,000.
Next would be for the Boys and Girls Club, recommended funding $10,000. And last would be for funding for Razzwell Memorial Laboratory, $255,186.
And Mr. Chairman, if I might give the language for the, if there's gonna be a motion, just wanted to make sure we have that language clear.
So we need a motion to, we need a motion to adopt the FY24 budget as presented, noting those members who've been excused from voting on appropriation to those outside agencies. This one include adopting, let's see, five budget ordinances, which include the general fund and school capital ordinance, special revenue funds ordinance, custodial funds ordinance, solid waste ordinance, and the water and sewer operations ordinance would be my recommendation. So next, the action on the compensation plan is to recommend to approve the plan, the new compensation plan, which has four separate pay structures. That includes a recommendation for an increase of 5% to EMS categorized staff, 5% to sheriff and detention categorized staff, 8% to healthcare categorized staff, and 10% for all other county offices.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we have a few in your agenda packet. I'll draw your attention to some of those added to answer questions on any others that you might have. If you turn to budget amendment number six. See budget amendment number six, but originally this is for Article 42, sales tax receipts that has to be distributed to the school systems by percentage. Ms. Barfield discovered that the original budget was not the correct percentage. It should be 75 Edgewood, 25 Nash County. So that would be just shifting some funds from one line to another, no additional appropriation. Budget amendment number seven. You'll see that we are budgeting the increase that we're realizing in inmate housing fee, and then appropriating those additional funds to cover cost overruns there in medical and dental for inmates. Budget amendment number eight, appropriate additional revenue real allocated in department. These are additional revenues that we're receiving in land due to fees above what our budget is, and then appropriating to those expenditure lines that you see there. I do have three additional budget amendments at your place. So I would ask if you would to consider approving, including and approving those as well. First one is budget number 14.1. This is to appropriate highway safety grant funds in the sheriff's office as a revenue, and spreading those over those expenditure lines that you see there. 14.2, this is to amend the budget for the increase in deposits and payments in those lines and cooperative extension, increasing those revenues and appropriating those expenditures. And 14.3, these additional funds that come in the inmate pay till deposit system at the detention center. And you'll see that there's an increase in the jail inmate refund as well. So that is just an increase by in and out. There are a number of others that approved, some approved by me, some approved by our CFO. Have any questions? I recommend you put all of those. Oh, I'm sorry. Number, number one through 14, for through.